Thank you.
Hi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We call this meeting in the Monongahia County Commission to order. Today is Tuesday, June 18th, at 10 o'clock a.m. Eastern Standard Time. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is consent and approval with our county administrator, Renata McClure. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning, Renata.
... zero exonerations to approve today in one minute for June 12th, 2024. Vouchers: General County, 160,003, 2997, 911, 9,746, 27. Chestnut Ridge Park, 2,393, 58. Camp Muffley, 278, 72. Mason Dixon Park, 616, 53. Recreation levy, 1,005, 33, 55. Reallocated coal, 161, 02. Purchasing card, General County, 48,009, 77, 54. Magistrate Court, 1761. Home confinement, $56. Chestnut Ridge Park, 424, 60. Camp Muffley, 501, 09. Mason Dixon Park, 148, 76. Mon County Center, 139, 15. For a voucher total of 225, 324, 39. No budget revisions. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for June 18th, 2024.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent and agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Do we have any fiduciary issue?
No.
Items? Okay. Introduction to new employee personnel changes.
Prosecuting attorney has a new full-time assistant prosecuting attorney, Marshall Foster. Start date is July 1st and salary, yearly salary of $70,000.
Move to approve the new employee as presented?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any others?
No.
Moving right along. Next section of the meeting is comments from the public. I'm now open the comments from the public session of the meeting. Anybody wishing to be heard, please raise your hand, come forward, provide your full address, and time may be limited, discretion of the president.
Please come forward.
He can't see you.
Sorry.
Yeah, he can't see. Hello.
Good morning.
Welcome back. You're on vacation for a while, I think. Mary Ann Foles, 828 Bloody Run Road. And the topic of the day is, I guess a little bit of a sticky one, I don't know if you guys like us on this one as well, but Green Bag Road Roundabouts. I know that the work is, you know, they're starting to hand out or do the assessments for property. But I just want to throw out something. I don't know if you've thought about this, but, you know, Mr. Sekora, I know you're a very database person, I'm a database person. So what I have done over the last year is followed some of these trucks, and not in a creepy way, just to see where they're going. And so I have a pretty good idea of where they go. I've also Google mapped the length that it is, the additional length for them to go take Green Bag Road versus going through downtown. And the data is that it's a, currently it's approximately six minutes longer to take Green Bag Road than it is to go through Brockway and Walnut Street for the folks who are heading north and west. It's approximately, so it's three miles and six minutes longer. And the folks who are going south, they already take Green Bag Road. I see them all the time, I'm sure you do too, based upon where your office is. So the problem is with the folks who are going to, going north and west, and about half of those trucks stop there at the facility next to the Seneca Center. So that's where about half of them are going. It's a 21-mile trip, 42 miles round trip. That's an extra six miles round trip if they take Green Bag Road. So I did the math. That's approximately, if they took three trips a day, which is conservative, they could easily do four, that is an extra $3,000 a year in diesel fuel. And it is an extra three weeks of drive time to take Green Bag Road. Now, these are independent drivers, they don't work for Greer, so they're going to be in a position where you're asking them, or, you know, hoping that these folks are going to take a $3,000 a year basically cut, plus the amount of money that they would get from not driving an extra three weeks. So, you know, I talked to a few of them. And what I can tell you is, so far, I have yet to meet any of them that are planning to change their route. And they're not planning to change the route for exactly the reasons I just mentioned. So, you know, we're going to spend, after Phase 1 and Phase 2, $3 million, and we're still going to have these trucks coming through downtown. So my concern is, is this the right approach? I want the trucks out in downtown as much as you do, but I'm feeling like we're going down the wrong path. And I would ask that you all think about this, excuse me, think about, is there another route that we could take, or that we could encourage them to take, that's closer to the route that they're taking today? Because I do feel like in, in general, we're going to spend all this money and it's going to be for nothing. Although, for people like me who drive Green Bag Road, it'll be a nicer road, but it's not going to help, it's not going to help the problem downtown. So that's my, that's my topic for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. We'll go ahead and close the public comment session of the meeting. Okay. The next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, I lost my place. Grants. Colleen Coon, our county office, commission office manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I request for reimbursement. The first one is for the Saki Grant, Purpose Area 1, and that is in the amount of $11,815.63. The next one is the Saki DNA Grant, which is Purpose Area 3, and that is in the amount of $11,883.59. And finally, I have the Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $1,693.44.
Move to authorize the president to sign the grant documents as presented?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
None for me.
No.
Okay. Moving right along. Unfinished business, we have none. New business. Consideration to approve requests from the Upper Monongahia-Mongehelia River Association for funding towards lock operations.
So moved. Oh, second.
Okay. You want to provide a little bit of a description?
So, many years ago, the commission entered into an agreement with the Upper Monongahela River Association, and to administer this contributed funds account. So they get donations or contributions from different entities, Marion County Commission, UMR, which is the Upper Monongahela River Association, the Development Authority, and some other entities. Granville, I think, has contributed to it. And so there's a pool of money in order to assist the Army Corps to keep the locks open, so that river traffic can continue. Because they were, they were discussing at one time to reduce that to almost nothing. So UMR has requested that the commission actually provide $10,000 in funding towards the lockages. This is not something that we have done on an annual basis, but the commission has agreed to do that from time to time, just to replenish the fund.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Consideration to approve the request by the Monongahia County Abandoned and Dilapidated Property Enforcement Agency to move the following properties to the complaint stage in accordance with County Ordinance 2004-01. District 3, MAP 17A, Parcel 10, 62 Brock Mine Road. District 3, MAP 17B, Parcel 36, 816 Mason Dixon Highway. District 7, MAP 5B, Parcel 44, 140 West Jackson Street. District 7, MAP 12, Parcel 37, 2363 Fairmont Road. So will the commission?
Move to approve the, moving those properties to the complaint stage?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
No, this is just, we appreciate Alex, our litter control officer, moving this forward and taking an active role in seeing that these complaints are brought forth to the commission and try to get some of these properties cleaned up for the betterment of our community.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consideration of an award regarding RFP 2024 MCC 002 for janitorial support services. If you guys recall, this was, we initially issued the RFP of 61423. That was RFP 001. We received no responses, so we redid the statement of work. We moved the work around. We created separate firm fixed price line items for the, there's the daily and the weekly, and then there's monthly, and there's semiannual, and then there's annual. So that way, one of the feedback we got from the current vendor was they weren't able to do a lot of the tasks, but we were being billed a firm fixed price for all of those services, so it's more efficient if we broke those out. We also took out consumables, and the county has a plan to hire a custodial supervisor that will, will order and keep track of the consumables. That's a savings to the, to the county, and that way we have a little bit more control over those, over those consumables and make sure that they're used here in the county. So we restructured that a little bit, and we did get two responses to the second RFP, RFP 002, which is the one we're talking about. We got two responses in, one from Patent Building Services LLC, Patent Building Services Incorporated, and the other was Bucket Ladies LLC. They were both very close from a technical standpoint. We evaluated them both technically, and then once we did the technical evaluation and determined that they met the medium acceptable threshold, then we did the cost evaluation. And through all that, we went back and asked for a best and final offer, mainly not really as much for the cost aspect of it, but more for the technical aspect of it, to ensure that how they were going to get the work done. And we did receive responses from both. One in, one patent in bringing, sending back their best and final offer also lowered their initial offer. Bucket Ladies responded to the technical information that we asked for, but indicated that their offer was their best and final offer. So the final determination was it was Patent Building Services Incorporated that was the overall successful offer. We had a meeting with them last week to ensure how the, if awarded, and how the services would be performed. We were satisfied with that, so we determined to put it as an action item to come forward before the commission to approve. So what we have before us is a request to approve the proposal received by Patent Building Services LLC, which will be incorporated into a final agreement. And then once that agreement is finalized and ready to execute, then I ask that the commission grant approval for myself or the administrator to go ahead and sign that agreement. But what we're approving is the proposal, and we'll make sure that the proposal matches the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Easy enough.
You got all that, Brad? All right. So we have a first and a second. Do we have any other comments?
No.
Okay. This is a very area, and I've seen it in both areas of my professional life, it's hard to find entities to come in and do this. We toyed around with hiring staff a couple of years ago. We didn't get the number of applicants that we would like, so then we went back and tried to reformulate the existing contract, and hopefully this is a good path forward. We did put some things in the contract that makes, that provides an incentive for the vendor to perform. We allowed for price increases in, that matched the consumer price index of, of the each renewal year. We also acknowledged that there are some federal labor laws that are changing, and if those change and have to cause changes in their employees' wages, that we will also look at those as long as documentation is provided to that effect. So I think it's fair, and I think this is a good path forward. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Consider for approval, requisition number 29 for the Series 21B Harmony Grove Phase 1 Project Fund.
Move for approval. Second.
Requisition has $45,000. This fund will be moved to...
Adrian Enterprises LLC for project management, Preston Contractors for roadwork, and Mills Group for site inspections.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consider a request for proposal 2024 MCC 004 for HVAC system support services. Do I have a motion to approve the RFP?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And this RFP is, we have a, I think about eight or nine individual contracts with an entity to perform these services for different buildings, and all of those contracts have different period of performances. So we realize that, given all these contracts in total, should be something that every once in a while, we should put, put out the bid to make sure that we're getting the best price possible. So we've pulled these things together into one contract, and this, that's the purpose of this RFP. So we'll be sending this out, and hopefully we'll, we'll get, obviously, hopefully responses from the current vendor, and then possibly a couple, a couple more, to make sure that we're getting the best value for our, for the money that we pay for these services. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Consideration to approve emergency funding in conjunction with the city of Morgantown for the Bartlett House. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. A couple of weeks back, and I know that the Bartlett House was in when they announced that they were having financial difficulty. There was a lot of concern locally about being involved in, in regards to the commission. We got a lot of requests to be involved in the solution. The commission chose to delegate me to work with the city manager, to ensure that some solution was being worked on. But that way, to do it behind the scenes rather than make a public show of it, if we felt like we can accomplish more. I am confident that there is a solution that will be worked out and will be in place, hopefully July 1. Tom, you probably know more than about that than me, but I'm just, I'm confident that there, they will have something in place that will move forward in July 1. This request was to make sure that we can keep the existing employees working through the end of June. So the city manager came, and he said it was a $35,000 number to get Bartlett House through June, and would the county be interested in participate in half of that? So this request is for $17,500 to match our half, that will also be matched by the city as a one-time payment to Bartlett House to cover payroll of employees through the end of June. So we have a first and a second. Any other discussion?
No, that, just that this was an emergency funding, and we had to get this fund to them immediately so they could be paid on Friday. And as you stated, this is a one-time, and I want it very clear, a one-time consideration because we realize the emergence, the urgency of the situation.
And it's essential to keep the employees that are there. They know how the facility runs for the continuity of it, if another group is brought into, which is the solution they're working towards, to continue the operations, for a seamless operation to continue. It's essential that we keep these employees that are there and engaged and willing to stay, so that we don't lose these services that are so desperately needed.
And yes, the commission delegated me to talk to the city manager, but Commissioner Arnett sits on the Morgantown Community Resources Board, which runs the Hazel's House of Hope and is the landlord for Bartlett House, for their homeless shelter. And of course, Tom, you're involved in a lot of these organizations. So we've all been involved, but we just thought that it best if I just talked directly with the city manager and the city, and I talk with the commission, the city manager talks with the city council, and we can get a lot more done in that manner. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an award in response to RFP 2024 MCC BBD 001.
Move to approve?
Second. And for discussion?
Oh, you want to have some discussion?
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to. How many months have you worked on this?
You can tell by Tom's drumroll that this was, this was a big item, and it certainly is. For those of you that don't know, the, this RFP was broadband development RFP that we put out in February. And Tom's right, we've been working on this since, 2009 was the first time the administrator and I went to a Region 6 meeting where they handed out a plan for broadband for the whole region. And that region includes Doddridge, Harrison, Marion, Monongahia, Preston, and Taylor. And they actually handed us the plan. And I looked at the plan, and I went to our section, and it was like, $1,900, $900,000, why don't, let's do it? And I asked them that question, okay, so how do you, let's do it. How do we, how do we do that? And I kind of got a strange look, but after reading the plan, I felt like, well, there's a lot, there's a lot that we don't know. And one of the things that we probably ought to do is do our own plan, so we really have something that's tailored for Monongahia County. So we started this extensive RFP. It took us like nine months just to get the scope of work together, and we had a number of individuals and a number of organizations all across the county that were working on this. So we put out, we put out an RFP in February of '21. We had 10 responses. We down, down-selected to the top five, and we did orals for all five of those. And then we ended up with, at that point, we, we had a ranking as far as technical, and, and we had those that achieved the minimal acceptable requirement, as spelled out in state code in regards to technical capability. So then we went into the cost section of it, and that's where it proved to be really challenging, because our, the highest, the highest bid was actually Ice Miller Team, and they were about $250,000, and the lowest, the next competitor was like $50,000. But Ice Miller had done such a great job in the orals that, and we weighted this thing 70/30, so it allowed us to put that much more emphasis on the technical side of it. And Ice Miller was the eventual winner. So then we spent nine months with Ice Miller, working on the plan, going through all parts of this county, meeting different areas, doing a survey. And at the end of that nine months, we came up, came up with our strategic comprehensive broadband plan for the county. So the next step was, is, okay, how do we do this? So we had, we put provisions in our original RFP that allowed for a follow-on contract with whoever our consultant was. And so we entered into follow-on contracts with lit communities, who did the technical assessment, and they did all the engineering. We also had a grant component, so we hired someone to, okay, as we go forward, our plan was to provide a countywide middle-mile broadband network, and we were going to finance that through grants. So we, grants, so we had a hearty, and, and our ARPA dollars. So we had a, we had a pretty hefty grant task in there too, to go out and start looking at all the grant documents. So we, we looked, and again, at all parts of this, the commission was very involved, the overall commission was very involved in this process, but we picked Ring 11, which was in the western end of the county, as the place to start. And as we started working through the engineering, we did a wireless assessment of the area, which came back, that wireless assessment itself came back $17 million to do a wireless, and it required like 12 towers. And we had just spent two years putting up one at Catherine's Knob, so the commission didn't have a, a real good appetite for that. So we started looking at just the, you know, we know, we wanted to do what we said in the beginning. We wanted to have a fiber backbone and try to go that route. So we had the engineering done, and around that time, a lot of these grant opportunities really started breaking loose. We had, the BEAD was the big one that came out. And the state and federal kind of changed direction as far as how they wanted to do those grants. They really wanted to do those grants not like we were doing it here. We were kind of anomaly where we, we said, how do we do this? Let's figure out a plan, and let's execute that plan. While everybody else was kind of sitting back and saying, well, we need people, we need experts that know how to do this, and let's just leave it all on them. So we were kind of doing it from a program, from a program standpoint, the way we thought we should have done it. And, but the grant funding wasn't going to flow that way. So we had to rethink, and that's where we decided, well, okay, so now we, we've done enough engineering where we really can give people the playbook for how to provide connectivity to our whole, whole county. So let's do that. Let's release that in our RFP and see what we get. So we released that RFP. I think we released it last, hmm, October, October 23. We released the RFP, and we had, the responses came in around Christmas time, around January, and we started the whole process of going through that. We had, we had two responses. We had Frontier, and we had Comcast. As we started doing the technical evaluation, Comcast was unanimously rated the highest of all, of all eight of our evaluators. So I came back to the commission and laid it all out there as far as what both were offering, and had a head nod from the commission to go ahead and see if we can negotiate an agreement with Comcast. And that's what we've been working on since, I believe, we started our first meetings in March. So we've been working with the Comcast team every week. We've had weekly meetings, and last Friday, we basically got to the point where we had an agreement that was ready to bring before commission, and that's what we have here. So it's, it's been, it's been a wonderful experience, even way back to the Region 6, but I'm happy to finally start handing stuff off and seeing shovels in the ground and seeing people actually executing. So here's where we're at. This total project is $17,820. The commission's part of it is $5,980, which we'll use out of our ARPA funds, and Comcast is, is going to provide the rest. So I've done all this talking. Do you guys want to talk? Or Kevin, do you want to come up and say anything?
Yeah, please. Please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kevin Brochert, I'm the Vice President of Government Affairs for Comcast. And I just want to thank you all for your forward-looking leadership here, because I know this is a ton of work, and it's been going on for a number of years, and I want to thank especially Commissioner Sekora, because going back to 2009, I know how much work he's put into this, and it really has been a pleasure.
2019.
2019.
I wasn't here.
2019. 2019. But, but still, we know this is not an easy problem to solve for, but we do believe that these kinds of public-private partnerships are the best way to kind of close out this world digital divide. And we're just thrilled to be here today to kind of, not only be selected for the, as the winner of this RFP, but really kind of get to work on actually building out the network. So I want to thank you all for your, for your leadership, for the hard work that you've put into this too, and just work, we just can't wait to get to work to kind of build out our, our gig-speed, expedient network and bring that to more residents here in the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
I'd just like to thank Sean for, he's literally put in hundreds, and I don't use that as an exaggeration, hundreds of hours into this. It's been his baby from the beginning. I mean, Tom and I have been around to, to, for feedback and help where needed, but this has basically been all Sean's. So we appreciate the effort and the work, and we wouldn't have gotten close to being here without all your diligence, and not that you need a pat on the back from me, but thank you very much for all your efforts in this. And thank you to Comcast for stepping up and providing us with an incredibly, a much better solution than I think we could have ever come up with on our own as far as the comprehensiveness and the, and the costs. So thank you, and we look forward to working with you going forward.
Well, this has certainly been a team effort. All, when I mentioned all the organizations that were participating in this, we had the Morgantown Area Partnership, the MMPO, the Morgantown Planning Commission... Area Partnership, the MMPO, the Morgantown Planning Commission, 911, the Morgantown Health, the Mon County Health Department, the Board of Education, our county GIS, the county IT, Delegate Statler participated in a lot of those earlier meetings where we were trying to put together a statement of work. Obviously, our county commission staff, and Senator Capito and Senator Manchin have been very instrumental. And then we even had a couple citizens that were very, I had one, one guy that kept, kept emailing me about his service.
Sweet from the committee.
And I kept like, let me just come to your house, because I'm visual. Like, I, we've been, when we discuss these maps and stuff in meetings, it doesn't do me any good. I need to go see it. So the citizen's name is Dave Shrewsbury, and he works at the FBI Center, but he lives out at Cheat Lake. And he, he, I'd describe him as a MacGyver. He would, he'd figure out a way to get connectivity. But when COVID hit, his wife is a teacher, so she had to be online. He had to be online for his job, and he had three kids at home that had to be online for schoolwork. And it just wasn't, it just wasn't cutting it. And he was doing things like he was taking, he, he could literally like take apart a hotspot and kind of like remove the chip or whatever that would block it from being able to get, get access. I mean, and I was like, I need to have a guy like this working on our team. And he participated in all, through the comprehensive broadband plan. He participated in all those meetings, gave input, and was really instrumental in, in just, you know, giving us his life experience as far as how he was getting by. And he still tags, tags up with me from time to time, his areas. He, he did kind of go to Starlink, because that was his only option right now. He has, there's a fiber line like half mile down the road. But some, eventually, I'm going to get his neighborhood, we're going to get his neighborhood connected, and that's probably one of the next things that we're going to talk about in the next couple of months, is how do we, how do we deal with these other areas, these other pockets? And we have a few ideas about that. But, you know, he's just a concerned citizen and that did everything. He called everybody, talked to everybody, and, you know, he was a wealth of knowledge to our team. So this, this was certainly a team effort. I do want to thank Tom. Tom Sussman's a friend of Monongalia County. Tom called me, it was summer of '23, and said, hey, can I, can I talk to you? Can I bring some guys in to show you something? So he brought, he initially brought the Comcast team in and said, you know, we, we hear you, we hear you talking about wanting ISPs to come and partner with you, and we have a few ideas. And they showed me kind of like the, some earlier ideas, and that was what gave me the idea for, okay, we can do this. This is something we can do, and let's put out an RFP so that we do this and everything's above the board. So we went from there, and Tom, I really want to appreciate all your efforts and your work that you do for Comcast, but ultimately, the work that you've done to benefit the citizens of our community. I really do, you are a friend of Monongalia County.
To go with what Jeff said, Sean was clearly the leader and instrumental in this project. And for the community to understand what we really did, when COVID hit, it really made a significant change for the businesses, for broadband, but really, I'll tell you how it hit Mon County, the school system. It was so bad that we would send school buses out into the community to make a hotspot so the kids could actually do the work. So what I'm so excited, since I represent the western end, the number one concern in the western end of Monongalia County is connection, connectivity, and internet. And it was really difficult to explain, because when the public hears there's millions and millions of dollars that the feds give, they just assume, okay, it's like building a house. You just give it, you build a house, and you have housing. And I learned probably the most important two words, middle mile. I knew nothing of what a middle mile was. And that is to get it from here to get, we helped build it, and then we get Comcast, then they take it to the person's house. And that really made such a change that when you all came in and came up with a proposal, and I really appreciate what you said, it's a private, private-public partnership. And Sean's too modest, but because of this program, he has gone statewide, he has gone to some national programs to explain how we did it. We are the first and the only one to do it this way. And hopefully, it's setting the motion up for other counties to understand the process. And again, I want to thank Comcast, because your bid is fantastic. It's, I mean, as he said, $17 million, we're putting in only $5 million. And people say, well, why are we putting this money? That's what the ARPA funds, our priority was. And the one other thing I would say about Monongalia County, and you might want to explain it, we had, when we did the survey, we had more people respond just in Mon County for where there is a lack of connectivity than when the state did it, and they got not even half of as many responses as we got. That was just something, and we did not know, because what we learned and what we passed on to Senator Manchin and Capito was, if one house in that area had internet, then that region was considered. And we had to change all that, and we, and it was your help, Sean, and the committee, and...
There's also the CEO. Ms. Palmer in the back.
Yes.
It was a big help for the tax office to send those surveys off with the tax cards they sent out.
Yes, we appreciate, we got a response.
That's how we got it to them, so thank you for your, your willingness to participate.
So it was a team effort.
Which was a suggestion made by our staff.
Yes.
So it was certainly...
And they did respond.
It certainly was, it certainly was a team effort.
I did want to pass that on.
I know you, I know that people probably want to know numbers where, and will be, there'll be a concerted effort to regularly release that information and, and get that information out there as we go along. The Comcast team will be here, and will, will be available for any questions after. Ben, Mike, if you guys have any specific questions. But really looking forward to, as I said how many times on our meetings, I wanted to get done by a certain date, and then I wanted to move into execution mode. So I want to start getting those execution meetings started and just start regularly going down that road. So, you know, thanks to everybody, and unless there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and take the vote. We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Congratulations, Monongalia County. There's one other thing that's a little bit, that's a little bit related to that, and Marcy, Kevin, I'll give you the opportunity. You guys had, there's a Community Impact Grant that through all of our conversations that you guys had put forward. Do you want to speak to that a little bit? I know we still have to work out a lot of details, but...
Sure, yes. As Commissioner mentioned, we're working to identify partners where we can provide $30,000 in funding to support digital literacy efforts, because we recognize that it's more, it's just as important for people to understand how to use the computers, how to use the internet than it is just to get the internet brought to their homes, too. So we're providing this grant to provide, to help an organization kind of teach people how to use the internet. And we look forward to continuing to work with you all to identify that organization. Also going to be sending up what we call Lift Zone, which is providing free Wi-Fi service to a community organization as well. So this is part of our broader effort to kind of help people not only expand broadband to rural areas, but also to kind of help people get connected and know how to use this technology to kind of better improve their lives.
And this has, this is kind of one of the things that we were criteriaing, that we were looking at when we were evaluating our offers. And again, we had a number of individuals, Sarah Pelfrey from the library was excellent in our team in evaluating and really pushing the limit on when we were, when we developed the RFP, to make sure that we were addressing digital equity and digital literacy. And this speaks to that, where we're envisioning probably a senior center where we would set this up at, where we can actually help inform our citizens and teach them and help them get more connected. So really appreciate, this is all, this is all part of this overall partnership. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other new business? Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors? Seeing none. Reports from county commissioners. Tom?
Okay. Let's start off with really positive, more positive news. Last week, Jeff Arnett and I attended the West Virginia Association of Counties, and I'm pleased to report that our very own Renetta McClure was chosen as the County Administrator of the Year. And I felt, and we wanted to wait until Sean was here to thank you. We really do appreciate it, and the state recognized that. That's part one.
Congratulations.
Jeff will do part two. Jeff will do part two along that line.
I'm comfortable with that phrase, so.
Yes.
And I'll have you know, Renetta texted me and asked me if I had anything to do with that. And I told her my exact response to her, said, so you don't think that other people in the state see what I see?
Right.
And she goes, oh, that's kind of a different way of looking at it, that her peers, her peers see what we see here in Mon County. So thank you, Renetta, certainly deserving.
Thanks.
A couple other issues, and I'd appreciate if the media somehow promotes this. Please, tomorrow and Thursday are holidays. That means that the recycling center will be closed in Westover, and we would appreciate if people don't go there and throw the recycling down on the ground. I can tell you, this year, we have cameras, and we will also go after those individuals who are littering Westover and throwing the material down. So please, do not chock Wednesday and Thursday. It will reopen at 7:00 on Friday. So that is number two. Third thing is, for the first time in three years, and we're all excited to say that the Mountaineer Food Bank will be having our food giveaway with Pantry Plus More at Claybattel High School on Saturday in the 95-degree weather. But we really think it's important to be out there, and it's, like I said, the first time in three years that we've gone back out to Claybattel High School and the western end, so we'll, we'll be having that. Finally, to try and answer some of the questions that Ms. Foltz brought up, because they're legitimate questions. The Green Bag Road, first of all, has always been a truck route, and we have taken eight years to work on this process, of which, what happened was 82% of the city, well, 82% of the county voted to redo Green Bag Road. And that was during the Roads to Progress. The number one priority was the mile ground, number two was Green Bag Road. Now, what people do not understand is that it was the federal highway system that developed the plan, and when people had questions, we went back and did a second NEPA study, and we've had four studies along this lines. We are the only city in West Virginia that doesn't have an access road outside of our city of Morgantown. So the federal government realized we needed an access road, and here was the perfect way to do it, and the $18 million that is being spent. This was approved and unanimously by the city of Morgantown, Westover, the school system, MMPO. We're moving forward on this project. All other avenues and other directions did not meet the needs that would help. Now, will the trucks use this route? Again, I believe, once it is built and it's widened, I truly believe, not only will the trucks use the route, but many of the people that are going through the city now will have an access alternative. And that is what the public wanted, and that's why I'm very excited that, it's taken seven years, but we are moving forward on that. So they'll try and answer your questions. Thank you.
On that, my office does sit on Green Bag Road not far from the intersection of Kingwood Pike and Green Bag Road. And I can tell you, I don't know about all the trucks, but heck of a lot of trucks use that road now, because they rattle my windows as they go by. So it is a largely trafficked road, and it's a much-needed improvement. A few things here. Belated Happy Father's Day to everyone, we didn't mention that last week, just a couple days ago, to my hero and my dad, thank you for everything. Along with the award to Ms. McClure, and I would say probably in a direct correlation to Renetta winning Administrator of the Year, we were also selected as County of the Year by the Association of Counties, which is the award that Sean's holding there now. So it was a great honor, and we, we certainly would not be in that position without, without our staff and without my fellow commissioners. So that was a great honor, and we're proud to have won that. We had our first 4H camp last week at Camp Muffley, 190 campers. I was out there a couple of different times, and the place, it was wonderful, like the kids running everywhere, enjoying the pool and the fields and doing crafts and participating in all their activities. And shout out to Becca Clark, our Extension Officer with WVU and 4H, putting on a wonderful camp, and I'm sure she'd give accolades to her whole staff, but it was, it was incredibly well-attended event, and I heard the food was bountiful and very good. My son actually volunteered for the week out there, and, and he indicated, Dad, there's so much food out here. Are you guys footing the bill for this? I said, no, I said, we supplement some to help by providing the facility, but it's paid for by 4H through their, their fees. So it, but it was a really, a really nice event. And on a side matter unrelated to Comcast being here today, I had a call from a concerned citizen who looks after an elderly, homebound gentleman on 857, not far from the Volunteer Fire Department, that had been out of service for a few days. I simply made a call to the customer service number, and within 24 hours, the service was turned back on. So I just did that through the regular number. I didn't use any contacts we had in meeting you all. So your team did a really good job and got that gentleman. He basically was on an island without phones or internet, because he can't get out, couldn't get ahold of anybody. So I appreciate your, your, your staff out there taking care of what they, what they did. So that's all I've got.
My report is a little light. Last week, I was working from Waco, so I wasn't, didn't have a lot of my meetings, but I was still working them unless. When I got back this Monday, we had a meeting with Department of Highways regarding the Exit 155 project. The administrator attended that meeting with, with me. We have an MMPO meeting coming up next Thursday, so we'll, we'll discuss, we'll, we'll report, our subgroup that was meeting with the DOH will report back to the MMPO in regards to the progress regarding both of those projects. And it seems like that might become my next, my next project is, is getting that Exit 155 and getting those two, those two, we have a grant award, and we have a commitment from the state, and somehow, that's a problem. We have to figure out how to make it, make it work, but we're going to work it out and make it work. In regards to the MMPO, Mary Ann, I would suggest that if, that, that is a better audience for, for that information and that request, because everybody, you know, we're only part of the MMPO, and, and that group, along with Bill Austin, can really spot out more information about that overall project. And again, but we do appreciate your input. We, we listen, and thank you for, for bringing it to us. Today's a regular day, though tomorrow, it's a holiday, but I still have a Morgantown Area Partnership Board meeting, and we don't have, I'll be in Roanoke for a WV Corp meeting going down Thursday night. I have my meeting on Friday. It's our quarterly board meeting for the WV Corp, so I'll be in Roanoke on Friday, coming back Friday afternoon. In regards to the meeting, thank you, guys. I'm looking forward to Marcy or Kirsten, or Kristen, whoever's going to start those project execution meetings going, I'm waiting. And whenever, I think Fridays will probably be a good day, we can slot it right into the existing timeframe. But I'm really excited to get, get moving on, on that aspect, the execution of the project. And thank you for all your efforts. And again, Tom, thank you. Jamie, Kevin, Meredith, thank you, thank you all, and thank your whole team, because it has been a very, it's been a team effort. Sorry. In regards to the, these, these awards, I want to point out that these awards were from the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia. So they're the ones that understand what it's like to be a county commissioner and what it's like to run a county. So they're the most, it's not like we got this award from, you know, some popularity contest. So again, Renetta, it's very well-earned. And the county, it doesn't tell me anything I don't know, that this is the best county in West Virginia as far as how we operate as a commission, and that's due to the teamwork of everybody, our staff and everybody, all three commissioners, all, you know, we never, politics really never come up in commission chambers. We just try to figure out, we don't, we don't assign labels to things. We just try to figure out what needs to be done, what makes sense, and how do we get it done? So that's a tribute to all the work that we do together. So it's certainly well-deserved, and, you know, it's, it's not a secret to me. Having said that, I don't have anything else. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still move?
Second.
Okay. We're adjourned.